All right, two-minute warning. Okay, we're gonna begin the meeting. Do I have to wait for the lady? No? Okay, we're gonna call the meeting in order at this time, it's 6:30, June 15th, believe it or not. The year is almost halfway over already. Welcome, everyone, to the Velgula Council Meeting for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. And you can stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Diane, please let the record show, all members of council are present.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And we're gonna start out with reports. This morning, there was a transportation planning ABC meeting. The only item that we really had to take an action on was to update the five-year tip, which was approved with the exception of the members of West Palm Beach because it includes the State Road 7 project. So, that's consistent. We also had an interesting presentation from Miami-Dade County Representatives and Broward County Representatives, where they gave us an update on a major initiative that we'll report with putting transportation assets on the FC, what's that called? The FEC corridor. And it was interesting. Here's an initiative that they basically started out about 10 years ago to start working on. And it's really reaching a point now where it's really happening. It's coming to fruition. One of the key points of the conversation and questions from the TPA Board was whether or not the funding that they were able to receive from the state and federal level to help make this project happen would have happened if they didn't already have their own funding source, which they do. I've mentioned this before, that the counties to our south, and we're part of that transportation network, the three counties, Broward and Miami-Dade and Palm Beach County, they have, it took several years to get this in place, independent funding source to do these kind of major mass transportation initiatives. And the question was, would they have gotten the funds from the government, from the state, if they didn't have that? And the answer was, the short answer was no, they would not have. And the reason why it's relevant to us, because this is one of the issues that's been on our agenda at the TPA for a few years now, of moving Palm Beach County to a point where we create an independent funding source so we can provide a high-quality, elite public transportation network. So, stay tuned, because this is a process that will continue. So with that, I guess we'll start with you, Jan.
Good evening, everyone. Just one little announcement. I'm always happy to share that this year is our third year with Shakespeare in the Park, measure by measure, Thursday, July 20th through Sunday, the 23rd. And it's free to all, and there will be food vendors and drinks, and always a good time. So come out and see Shakespeare. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. First, let me start off by congratulating Councilwoman Roduski for being installed again for another year on the board of directors of the Palm Beach County League of Cities.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We're delighted that you're representing us. I think it's the time of year of graduation and installation. Graduation of 25 nurses to of Palm Beach. And that's actually their 10th graduation that they've done. So they've been here for 10 years, and it's been a really successful school. They continue to grow, and most importantly, they are providing us with nurses, nurses assistants, and other professional healthcare workers that we need so desperately. So congratulations to Dan Splain, his wife, for 10 years of successful business here in Royal Palm Beach. Interestingly enough, the guest speaker that they had is a young man by the name of Dante Tolbert. He's founder and CEO of Florence Technologies, which is an innovative ed tech company established to combat the current nursing shortage through artificial intelligence-driven solutions. So AI is not to be feared. But anyway, he was very interesting, he really was.
Their timing is perfect.
Indeed.
In this particular space. And as you mentioned, it's not only the technology they're looking to provide, but not only the way that will address the nursing shortages, provide a different capability, a greater capability for nurses, students to learn hands-on the things they need to learn.
Kind of like a flight simulator kind of a thing?
That was the example you said.
That was the example.
The equivalent of the pilot learning how to fly a jet using a flight simulator.
So indeed, very interesting, and congratulations to all of the graduates, as well as to the business. We're delighted to have them here in Royal Palm Beach. On Saturday, June 9th, Crestwood Middle School, on a Saturday after school is out, brought together about 30 students who are members of the National Junior Honor Society for what they call the Leadership Retreat. And for three hours, from 9 o'clock until about noon, they invited seven speakers to come and speak on their perspective on leadership. And it was very, very interesting, I think, for all of the speakers, as well as for the kids. And the kids were very engaged, but I was most impressed with the fact that it was Saturday, school is out, and here they are. And so they were really engaged, and I'm looking forward to next year. They're gonna be doing this annually, this retreat. And they're gonna be looking for speakers. So if you all want to join in sometime, it's a great opportunity. And in particular during the school year, they're going to be meeting at least twice a month. And they're using the book Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. Yeah, right? And it's a great format, it really, really is. And so they're looking for individuals who want to pick any one of the seven habits and join them for one of their meetings to kind of give their experience in that particular area. So I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to weigh in. And so congratulations to everybody over there. They've done a really good job, they're very creative, they're reaching out, and the kids are really responding. So Crestwood Middle School is doing some really, really good things. And of course, we had a Memorial Day service, and that is always a very moving ceremony. Well done, it's an opportunity for the community to get together and honor those who gave their lives for our country and our freedom. So that completes my report, thank you.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I have a quick question when they talked about transportation in West Palm Beach. Did they mention why they discontinued the trolleys?
That wasn't part of the agenda. This was like Broward and Miami-Dade. We could find out about that.
When we talk about transportation, and now they're stopping a very useful service.
My understanding was it's gonna be a different service implemented, I don't have the details.
Thank you. So through the school district and the library system, they are offering free lunches through the summer for kids 18 and under, lunches and snacks at all of the 17 Palm Beach County libraries. So you can go to pbclibrary.org to get that information, and that includes our one here in Royal Palm Beach. Again, congratulations, Vice Mayor Roduski, for her appointment onto the League of Cities Board. I attended the Business Development Board Luncheon, and the topic was Amazon's fulfillment in Palm Beach County. So they had, somebody from Amazon came in, talked about that in Florida since 2010, they've created over 49,000 full-time and part-time jobs throughout the entire state. They talked about 23 fulfillment or sorting centers, 38 delivery stations, and one regional air hub. In Palm Beach County, they have over 800 employees and three facilities. So one is their extra-large fulfillment center, which are like the furnitures and the larger items, and then two delivery stations. Memorial Day, we all attended that, so thank you again to the village and to the American Legion group family to put that together. Our Young at Heart had their senior prom and their last luncheon of the year. So thank you very much to the board and all the volunteers with our Young at Heart group for everything they've done over the season. And then look for applications again, our membership going back out for August for next year. And they're not limiting it again, so now we're in full force, post-COVID, and ready to go. We have concerts at the park, so tomorrow is Matthew Curry Band. And then there will be a senior ice cream social on the 30th over at the Cultural Center from noon to 2:30. We have our annual Fourth of July golf tournament with our Star Spangled Banner spectacular to follow with that. So we have a fishing tournament, volleyball, there'll be plenty of crafts, food, fireworks, everything. So that's July 4th. And then on the 7th is the Vida Band, which is a classic rock. We have a big festivity over at Commons Park. And finally, we lost another member of our Royal Palm Beach family. So our condolences go out to Vicki Day's family. We are going to miss her, so she was a longtime employee with us. That completes my report.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing up Vicki.
I just have one thing. So all the things that Selena just mentioned, what you can do is come to our budget workshop on July 6th and find out how we pay for all that. And then on July 13th, we'll have the adoption of our rate for next year. And we're proposing, at the current, we're proposing the same rate that we had this last year. And the budget is, we're preparing at this moment. So July 6th is the budget workshop here in the council chambers.
Halfway through the year, here we are, budget in time.
Yeah, it'll be 6:30, right Diane? It'll be 6:30, yes.
Good evening, council. As you requested last month, I have a brief presentation on some of the nasty year nasties that may implicate themselves here in the village and you guys personally. So the first one that I want to talk about, everybody is aware of the Live Local Act, at least by name, and generally by the fact that it has to do with affordable housing. This was signed into law very early. This was one of the first bills that the governor signed into law. It's effective July 1st, relevant to the village. This amends state law to allow mixed-use residential projects that have more than 10% of the units qualifying as affordable, and with at least 65% of the total mixed-use square footage being developed as residential to be developed in commercial or industrial zones, as well as mixed-use zones. In addition to that, if at least 40% of the residential units are restricted as affordable for a minimum of 30 years, there are a number of preemptions and approval overrides that happen. If that's the case, the municipality is preempted from requiring any zoning or land use amendments, any special exceptions, variance approvals, for height, zoning, or density. We're preempted from limiting the density of a proposed development to anything less than the highest residential density allowed on any land in the village. We're preempted from limiting building height to anything less than the maximum height allowed for commercial or residential development within the village or within one-mile radius of the proposed development, or to three stories, whichever is higher. We're required to provide administrative approval without public hearings if the proposed development also conforms to all of our other applicable zoning regulations for multifamily development, other than land use density and height. So they get the break on the land use, the density and the height. If they conform to all the other things like parking, setback, landscaping, they don't even have to go through a public hearing, it gets approved administratively. Municipalities are encouraged to consider reductions to the required off-street parking requirements if any such development is located within a half a mile of what's called an accessible major transit stop. And that, we're actually allowed to define what that means in our code. Requires us to put into place policies for expedited permitting for these projects. It requires us to produce an inventory of village-owned land that would be suitable for this type of affordable housing project, and maintain that inventory on our website. That inventory is October 1st. Own anything. Passed last year. Notice requirement. Itself. This was, was. So even what order. Now, all that.
Height.
To allow higher than that. The one mixed-use allows 42, I think, and the other one allows more than that.
So now, how does this translate into if we have that property at Tardaroya with the hotel? If that's approved, does that mean that that is our height maximum, and that's what we're based off of? Not our standard two-story homes?
Correct. If they wanted to put in an affordable housing project that meets all the percentages and all of that. So you know, they have to at least do the math and see if the affordable housing numbers work for them. But that is all on the books right now. This act also created a variety of ad valorem tax incentives and exemptions. There's eligibility criteria for that. That's very much a 10,000-foot view of that statute, but that's basically what it does. The goal is to try and make the development of affordable housing in Florida as easy as possible. So that is on the books, and that happened. Next one I'll mention is Senate Bill 170. This is the municipal ordinance legislation, which I'm sure you're aware of. Also, this, it's been enrolled, it hasn't been signed by the governor, at least as of yesterday. As long as it's not vetoed, it will be effective October 1st. And this is the one that provides the requirement for the local government to prepare a business impact estimate prior to passing certain ordinances. And you know, the estimate has to be posted on our website, no later than the publication of the notice for adopting the ordinance. Has to include general information about what the ordinance is intended to do, what the estimated economic impact on the business is, and what the compliance costs are. The statute does say that it's not expected that a local government has to go out and hire any kind of financial consultant or accountant. You know, so these, to the extent it has to be done, it can be done in-house with finance staff, legal staff, planning staff. I suspect that, you know, the first one will be the most difficult, but once you have a model in place, it'll be something to rely on in doing future ones. Now, the good news is that there are quite a few ordinances that are exempt from this requirement. Ordinances that require us to comply with federal or state law, you don't have to do this. Ordinances that issue or refinance debt, so if you know you had a bond issued, it doesn't apply. Or your budget, if you did your budget by ordinance, we don't. But ordinances that adopt budgets, implement contracts, or affect emergency procurement are all exempt. Most importantly, ordinances that relate to growth management, planning, zoning, and permitting are exempt. So anything we do that deals with the comp plan or our land development regulations, not. Anything that has to do with the. So there's really. Special vehicles. Category of that. So at some point, we're gonna adopt an ordinance that will require us to go through this exercise. And you know, we will when we have to, but you know.
We'll cross that bridge if we get to it.
And the ordinance provides attorney's fees up to $50,000 if somebody challenges a non-exempt ordinance as being arbitrary or unreasonable. And it require.
We would be liable for up to $50,000?
If we passed an ordinance that you had to do this economic impact for, and somebody sued the village saying it's an unreasonable ordinance, and we lost, we'd be on the hook for their attorney's fees up to $50,000.
We can't do that.
We're required, in the event that happens, you're also required to suspend enforcement of that ordinance pending the litigation. On the positive side, this is the statute that they attached, what I call the testa fix to. This was the litigation that came out of Jupiter Island that had to do with advertising and ordinance for second reading. And when that got continued, the question arose whether you had to re-advertise it or if you could just announce at times certain. So they actually added legislation into this bill that codifies the idea that all you have to do is announce the time certain, you don't have to re-advertise. So you know, it solved that problem for everybody but Jupiter Island. And as a side note, that case, it appears is gonna go to the Florida Supreme Court as well. Discretionary jurisdiction has been invoked, and lower appellate court declared it to be a matter of great public importance. So that's that one. This next one will impact each of you individually. This is Senate Bill 774, and this was also signed into law. This is the statute that now requires the mayor and all elected municipal officials to use Form 6, financial disclosure, as opposed to Form 1, which basically means you're filing your tax return. That's actually, is an option on the form, you can say, well, I'm just gonna give you my tax return. Otherwise, you have to basically list assets and liabilities that are in excess of $1,000 in value on an itemized basis, as well as sources of income and liability. So this is the form that county commissioners and constitutional officers have to file.
When is that effective?
That's effective January 1st of 2024. Yeah, so it's not, you know, this year you can continue to use Form 1, but starting next year, you have to go to Form 6. This is creating a fair amount of concern throughout the state. There are people who say, you know, I'm not doing it. I'll resign, I've heard that, so we will see how that one goes. One other one that I wanted to mention briefly, fairly innocuous compared to all the other ones I just mentioned. House Bill 650. Allows municipal. An automated. Restriction. You have to pass an. Study to. That. You've had. That statute. For dealing with.
Some of them where they do.
It's automated. Didn't pass. Passed this year. A half million. So that would have been a. Care, but the mobility, the mobility fee legislation. Get through either. The one, those would.
If that didn't. And.
So there. Is plus.
It'd be about the. Is the. That's all into that category?
We, if the village owns property that could be used for one of these affordable housing projects in a mixed use or industrial or commercial zone, and you're supposed to create an inventory list of that property and post it on your website. Doesn't mean, you know, you have to. If somebody comes in. But.
Disclosure process.
At every single. Or not.
Yeah, hundred dollars. Let's make a. Report. Includes our reports in this evening. Um, at this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time to do that. Seeing no petitions out there, I'm closing the floor to petitions for the evening. And now we'll look for statements from the public on non-agenda items or items on a consent agenda. Diane, we have any advance requests?
No, Mayor.
Ray, we have any hands raised?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Okay. I have not received any comment cards for a non-agenda item or for a consent agenda item. If anyone here would like to, I will give you that option now. Seeing none, then I'm going to close the floor to stakeholders from the public on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. And with that, Diane, give us the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mayor, well, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Two, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a first addendum to cost agreement for Title Royale Development Review with Main Street at Title Royale LLC. Three, ratification of the first addendum to lease agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and Verdex Construction LLC for the continued use of unoccupied space within the David B. Farber Building for storing construction materials to be used in the Village Hall of Construction. Four, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a Parks and Recreation Month Event at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Saturday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from one P M. to four P M. Five, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold the Palm Beach Shakespeare Festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons on July twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, from five P M. until nine P M. Six, approval of a special event permit for Southern four forty-one Nissan to hold a sales event and barbecue on July second, twenty twenty-three, through July fifth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven A M. until four P M. Seven, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute consultant services. Authorization number one E. with D H G A Design Florida to provide architectural design services for the renovation and expansion of the recreation center. Project number P R. two-two-zero-one. The cost for said services shall not exceed three hundred and eighty-two thousand thirty-five dollars. Eight, adoption resolution number twenty-three nineteen. Resolution, Village Council, the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, providing for the approval and authorization for Palm Beach State College to utilize the official Village Municipal Seal as part of its ninetieth anniversary celebration, rather providing that this uses for a proper civic purpose, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay. Any questions of members of council?
Can I pull number five?
Number five, okay.
And number two, please.
Okay, number two and number five. Any other comments? All right, with that, I'll look for a motion for the remaining items.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items except for two and five.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Hi.
We have no poll. Um, item two.
So we have. Ten and. Matters. Five.
Oh, five. Okay.
Okay. So with that.
Wait, so you're saying we advertise it for ten, but we're saying here nine. Yeah, we have to make a change. How do we change that?
Well, for tonight, a motion to approve with the amendment to change the nine P M. close to a ten P M. close.
We'll make that motion.
Second.
Hi.
Any polls? Item number five.
Item number. Item number two, just for clarification for our residents. So what exactly does this entail in simplest form so everyone understands?
In the simplest form, it extends their existing lease. It's an empty space over at the David B. Farber Building. No, wait a minute. This is number two. I'll take the total one.
Oh.
I was like.
It's Chris's first day back.
But since you mentioned that, why are they extending that? No.
I'm sure Chris can answer number two also. That's why, that's why Bradford and I let him. But, uh, number two is a request from Brian Tuttle to basically end the agreement that we had that shortened his review time from a guaranteed twenty-one days to a guaranteed fourteen days. Um, and for, for that reduced time period, he was to pay for the consultants that we used for the review of his project. That agreement included final plat approval and some easement abandonment. And the agreement did not have us refunding any of the money to him as part of, that he paid as part of the agreement until those were complete. Well, they won't be complete for some time, and he's more interested in getting the refund now and ending the agreement, which will put final plat and easement agreements back on the regular schedule.
So then that takes the pressure off the staff then to get that turnover, that quick turnover. Gotcha. Thank you. Chris, you have anything you want to add? I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number two. Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show that consent agenda item number two was approved five zero. So with that, we're going to move to our regular agenda. And a regular agenda item, all one, is a public hearing to consider application number two-three-dash-zero-three-eight. An application by Schmidt Nichols on behalf of the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Applicant seeking site, plan modifications, and architectural approval for approximately fourteen thousand square foot addition to accommodate a new office, education, and exercise space, and various other site improvements to the existing recreation center situated at, on approximately fifty-seven-point-nine-five acre parcel of land located at one hundred Sweet Bay Lane. This is a quasi-judicial process, so who needs to be sworn in?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll swear them in. Can you gentlemen state your names for the record? Thank you. Can you both raise your right hands and also swear in village staff at the same time? Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Bradford, you as well? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council for ex parte disclosures on this item.
None.
Thank you.
Bradford, you're on. Great, thank you. Um, as you stated, Mayor, this is an application seeking a site plan modification and architectural approval for approximately fourteen thousand square foot addition to the existing recreation. Accommodate a new pre. Land improvements. The affected area being proposed. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval. This slide illustrates a site plan emphasizing the affected area highlighted in red. There, there will be no significant impacts to the neighboring properties. Access to the parking in the center will remain the same overall, the proposed site plan is in accordance with the public ownership. Zoning District. Here's a slide showing the landscaping improvements of the property.
The larger circle, those are the current, those are the existing trees that the.
Yes. Again, here's some more landscaping improvements. Um, this slide illustrates the architecture of the building.
How, how is this in relationship to what's there now?
It's different than what.
Okay, is that the short answer or is that the long?
So, so, so what, what you're, so when you look at that elevation to the left, that gray roof that's sloped, that's all new. And then behind that existing gem that curved shape is another gem that you can't see. It's behind it.
We'll be adding ledger stone along the bottom and repainting to be consistent with some of the color palettes that you see here on this campus. Um, the.
The palette, the palette we use is consistent with the Commons Park and the Cultural Center. We did not use the stone until at all.
Um, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this application by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant want to make, on behalf of us, want to make any comments?
I don't know. I think Bradford pretty much covered it. Uh, just a brief introduction, this actual project started back in twenty twenty-one with the initial feasibility and, and the space assessment that we did. And now it's coming to fruition. We've put together those things that we found talking with both Chris Marsh, Lou Recio, and Lou's staff at Recreation Center, of what they consider their needs in the near future and distant future to grow with the community and the age groups. Uh, with that, we dove in and started getting into the actual design of laying out the facility and, and the program spaces that would be needed, and, and then also the site. And I guess quickly with the site, I'd like to have Matt go over quickly with the site improvements, and then I'll jump back into the building and go over more of that with you.
Okay.
Did you have our presentation voted?
No, you were supposed to send it to the I S. department to be placed on the laptop.
My. That I sent over on Tuesday, so, um, I, I guess I don't have any additional comments other than, um, there are some additional landscaping improvements to lot two. I don't know if you're familiar with the site. It's sort of on the east side of the site. Um, there's additional parking being added as well as a new connector to lot two, so the basketball courts will be shifting a little bit. There'll be the addition of some landscaping throughout the site. Um, and there was a focus on the, I believe it's the west side, but kind of behind the building, there's a chiller enclosure back there. Um, we did add some significant landscaping back there to try to shield that from the neighbors to the far west. Um, so that's kind of the, the overview of the, um, site improvements.
The significant change to the parking area is that connection between the, kind of where the playground is and the pickleball court, uh, that area there, we are connecting that parking lot that, that was only accessible from the soccer fields. So that will now be a road connecting those two and, and make that parking lot accessible to the rec center at all times because when the soccer fields were closed and locked, we didn't have access to that area. Uh, the other thing they added to the site plan, um, was an additional restroom over by the pickleball courts or kind of between, next to the pickleball, basketball, and the, and the skate park in there. That was just, that came from a lot of requests from the pickleball players and the skateboard users, so.
I apologize if we didn't get the presentation through. Uh, could we? Well, I'll, I'll just go through it quickly. The, the existing facility, uh, we're adding more program space for senior programs to the west. We're kind of talking about it using the term the senior wing. Uh, and it's separated from the youth so that when you come in the front, there'll be a security desk at the front entrance as you come in, and you'll have to go through doors that they'll let you in and let you out, or let you in, not, not particularly out, but in, so that you can control who and what's going into the, into the facility itself. And you can go straight through there, and that's the youth area with the new gymnasium, and there'll be locker rooms and showers provided, uh, for the additional uses. And then over to the west wing, which is a new with a slanted roof, which will repeat what's already on the north side with the sloped roof and the curve. That will be what we're referring to as the senior wing. And there'll be four meeting rooms in there and a kitchen that can serve lunches and whatnot to the senior programs. Part of the, part of the whole thing that we went through adding these spaces, including the second gymnasium, was that right now, when, especially during the summertime, when the youth programs take over, a lot of those programs have to be moved out of the. This way, you'll be. And you can. Which is. I've been told. Think we covered just. Trying to do. Uh. So I think. Well, in the gymnasium. With a running. Gymnasium. Which can serve. Size, running. Who is excited. Watch what's going on. There's a basketball game. Use it as a. Previewing. Went on the floor. Uh, I think that's one of the things that came up that would be beneficial. That's pretty much it. Uh, the education area is staying pretty much the same. We're making it more secure. Um, we're, we've relocated the outdoor play court from the north side of the building to in between the two main buildings so that it's more secure, and we're limiting the, the number of access. And right now, the, all the students, everybody comes in through the front entrance, and which has been a desire by the health department, and I think ownership appreciates it. Uh, I think that's, Chris, can you think of any other highlights that we?
I guess the, the major highlight is, is where we're at the design process. So we, we look to complete the design and bid out early next year. It'll take three to four months to, uh, get the contractor under contract. So we're looking mid-next year to start construction, and then about eighteen to twenty-four months to complete construction. It's going to take a little bit longer because we intend to keep the building in operation during construction. So it, it will slow down progress a little bit as part of that.
As much as we can, we'll try to keep it operational.
We're going to have to try to do that, absolutely.
Hopefully, we can keep it going most of the time.
So doing the math real quick, it's like twenty twenty-six is what we're shooting for?
Correct.
Okay, and it is important to keep that operational, obviously, during the period.
Yeah, there'll be some time that we'll have to shut down, but for the most part, I've, I've gone through a potential with lieu of how we can close off while they're building a new wing to the south. And the gymnasium, we should be able to shut the existing off so they can build a new gymnasium. So it might go from the existing area, get the new built, and then while we're renovating the new, jump over to the new section. So hopefully, we can juggle around and keep most people into it.
Just one other thing, I'm guessing that your presentation would have shown what you just described. If there's any way we could actually get a copy of that. If there's any way we could actually get a copy of that presentation, that would be good.
Make sure I send it out.
We'll we'll email the council.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't know what happened in our electronic transfers. Good answer. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to finishing this.
Absolutely.
We do too, yeah. Before we take comments, other comments from the council, I want to find out if we have any public comment, any advanced comments on agenda item regular R one? No? Ray, anyone got their hands raised on agenda item R one?
No.
Okay. What's on agenda item? And.
Sorry, I had to go out, but maybe I had ex parte communications only with the village manager.
Noted for the record, thank you.
That's it? No, if there are no further comments, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show. Agenda item R one was approved five zero.
Thank you.
We're all looking forward to this project. Okay, agenda item R two is a public hearing to consider application number two zero dash one one three. An application by D.R. Horton, Inc., an adoption of resolution number two two dash one two, confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a site plan modification in order to remove approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty square feet of approved and unbuilt commercial square footage in a total of approximately twelve point two eight acres of vacant vacant and partially developed land from the existing site plan of record for Waterway Plaza for a property located northwest of Okeechobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. This is a quasi judicial process. Now, we have several agenda related items. I don't know if the same people will be speaking, but do you want to swear them in for those other items as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think they will be speaking on all of them, and I can also take all of your ex parte disclosures for all of the items, assuming they're the same for each. I presume they are. Can you state your name for the record, sir?
Doug Murray with WGI.
Thank you, can you raise your right hand for me, and I'll swear you in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So he's been sworn on this and all subsequent applications. And then I'll ask for council disclosures on any of the items two through eight that the applicant is here for.
I'm with the applicant too.
Okay, thank you.
With the applicant and village staff as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Bradford, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is seeking site site plan modification in order to remove approximately twelve point two eight acres of vacant and partially developed land. The entrance drive from the existing site plan of record for Waterway Plaza in order to develop property for one hundred townhomes. Site plan application, very other various other applications are companions to this agenda item. This is the area which is which the applicant seeks to remove from the previous approved site plan area in order to develop the hundred townhomes. In reviewing the application, village staff considered conformity with chapter twenty-six of Village Code of Ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets the requirements for the general commercial zoning district, the multi-family residential RM nine zoning district, and section twenty-six sixty-one, planned commercial developments. There are no site plan changes or improvements related to this particular application. Overall, the proposed site plan modification meets all village requirements for the general commercial zoning district and the RM nine zoning district. This item was originally considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and was recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And this pertains, the next thing I'm going to say pertains to all of the other applications, so I I I don't want to continue to repeat myself as per the interest of time. At the request of the applicant, this item was postponed at the June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two village council meeting in order to revise the site plan and to provide additional landscaping along the west property line, where they were showing no buffer in this area. Subsequently, the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If the applicant was to make any comments?
Yes, I do have a brief presentation.
The key key that? Here we are.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, Doug Murray with WGI on behalf of the applicant. I will skip the location map since Bradford covered that pretty well. Just a brief kind of introduction to the project and the history of the of where we are today. So we began the project in twenty nineteen, originally to start with the complaint amendment, the comprehensive amendment to change it from commercial to multi-family residential. It's August of twenty twenty, followed by the rezoning from commercial to RM nine, July of twenty twenty-one. Following that, we went through the TSR process. Finally, we went to Planning and Zoning Commission in May of twenty twenty-two. And as Bradford mentioned, in July of twenty twenty-two, prior to coming before you, we went back to the drawing board to address some concerns from potential views from the west and and where we had the requested zero buffer to kind of see what we could do to increase that. We originally were working with Indian Trails to see if we could reduce their easement width adjacent adjacent to the canal. That didn't work out for us. We went back and spoke with staff and came up came up with the idea to make some shifts in the plan, which brought us back to TSR. We were before the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and now before you today. So overall, we're at about three and a half years within this project. So this particular Waterway Plaza site plan modification, this is just a graphic showing you the entirety of the Waterway Plaza area. So as you can see in red, it's the unconstructed area that we're proposing to develop on the hundred townhomes. And in yellow, you'll see the development that's already complete and existing today. This is the approved site plan. We added a little color to it so it helped you see it a little better. So as you can see, it consisted of motel, office, and retail, both one and two story. And, you know, essentially, you know, looking from Madison Green's perspective, i- if that would have been built, they would have been looking across at the commercial plaza. So again, we're requesting to remove the hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty square feet. And this is just the site plan rendering of the proposed townhomes. So again, we're proposing to replace that with a hundred townhomes. One important thing to mention is is traffic. So going back to that commercial development, you just saw if that was built compared to the proposed townhomes. Switching to townhomes is a reduction of about twenty-five hundred trips, which is a reduction about seventy-seven percent in the traffic generated from this project. Again, staff has recommended approval of this application. Planning and zoning also recommended approval of this application. And that completes my presentation.
Okay. Before we take comments from members on council? Any events, comments?
No, Mayor.
Agenda item R two? No? Ray, any hands raised? Okay, I have not received any comment cards from agenda item R two. But since this is a subject covering several items on the agenda, we'll leave it open for now. With that, I look for comments from council? No questions?
Just to, I know because there's a lot of all of these coming through, and just so specifically, this is to change it so it's not the commercial. We've already approved it, the land used, but change it, but it's the site. Right, it's already been rezoned, but this is for the square footage of what was allotted to what it will be allotted, so.
Right, it's for it's for the master plan itself.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask if you could close public comment on each item? You'll reopen it for the next ones, but close it for each individual.
Still closing for?
Yes, sir, and then, right, and then you'll move the public comment on R three when you get to the next item, thank you.
I was told I cannot leave it dangling, so. We'll close public comment for agenda item R two for now, and if we need to be open, then I will. Okay, thanks, Betty. All right, any, if there are no further questions or comments in council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R two?
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? There are no opposed, Diane, let the record show that agenda item R two is approved five zero.
Yes, Mayor.
With that, we move to agenda item R three, which is also a public hearing to consider application number two one dash five six. I'm not applicant by WGI, Inc., an adoption of resolution number two two dash one four, confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking preliminary plat approval for plat number one, parcel of land totaling approximately twelve point twenty-eight acres for a property located on northeast corner of Okeechobee Boulevard.
I won't repeat what you just. It's consistent with. Again, this item was originally considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its meeting on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and recommended a vote of four to zero. Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three recommended approval by this of this application by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Comments from the applicant?
Sure, I just it's just basically just one slide, but just wanted to reiterate since this is just a plat that it is, the plat contains piece of a lot, it's not a rental project. It is piece of ownership.
Okay, piece of. Before we take comments from council, Diane, any advance comments? No? Ray, any advance, any comments, raised hands on agenda item R three?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R three, so I'm closing the floor to to comments from the public on agenda item R three. And take comments from the council? Questions, if there are none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, let the record show, agenda item R three is approved five zero. Now we'll move on to agenda item R four, which is a public hearing to consider applicant number two one dash two two, an application by D.R. Horton, Inc., an approval of variance order VC two two dash zero four to allow for variance from sections two three dash four nine sub B sub one to allow for tandem parking spaces for a multi-family residential development where Village Code allows tandem parking to be counted only for single-family residents, and from section two three dash one eight sub B sub three to allow vehicles which are neither prohibited or restricted to park in front of yards, front setbacks of residential property where only eleven percent of the front yards are landscaped, where Village Code prohibits parking in these areas except when lesser of one thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yards are landscaped for a property located northwest of the Okeechobee Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard at the intersection. Everyone's been sworn in already, this is quasi judicial process? Explain this, please, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. The applicant has requested variance from Village Code of Ordinances at section twenty-three forty-nine B one, general access at sub paragraph B in order to use tandem parking spaces for townhouse residential development where Village Code allows tandem parking to be counted towards the required parking spaces for single-family residents. So sub paragraph B requires that each parking space shall be accessible without having drive over or through any other parking spaces except for single-family residences, where one space may be located behind another. This variance, if approved, would allow tandem parking spaces for all for these townhouse units. This variance request is common request within townhouse developments, and it has been proved in the past. Here is here's an illustration of the driveway that we're speaking of. So you can imagine a car parked behind the garage door, and that would be considered tandem parking spaces, and that's the this portion of. Additionally, the. variance from section. Prohibited or restricted. Seven percent of the front. Village Code prohibits parking in these areas except for lesser of one thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yards are landscaped. The section of Village Code requires that if a residence is utilizing a vehicle parked in the front of the dwelling to meet the code required number of parking spaces in the front yards must be landscaped with lesser of one thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yard. The applicant would like to count the vehicle parking in the front of the dwelling to meet the Village Code required number of parking spaces and only provide eleven percent of the front yard as a landscaped area. As you can see here, this is the landscaping that the applicant is proposing. The width of the units would not facilitate those numbers of a thousand square feet or seventy-five percent of the front yard to be landscaped.
Bradford, so go back to the that other picture, please, real quick. Just to clarify, all of this subsections are six units, correct? Are there some that have four?
This one shows four.
That's why I'm asking, because I thought they were all six, so I wanted to clarify.
I think this is probably a typical that they've used in the past. This was kind of.
This is not accurate of what they're.
Correct, this this was me just trying to give you an idea of a driveway and and the approach.
Because I was like, you can't do the side by side on that too, so that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, gotcha, that's just an example of this looks pretty, and we're not living there. All right, thanks.
Here's a illustration of the overall site plan, so you can begin to visualize what this variance in this development will begin to look like. Village Code, section twenty-three fifty-three A one allows village council to grant variances of parking code when special conditions and circumstances exist whichever huge a land, structure, or building involved do not result from the actions of the applicant. Will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. At the variance granted, it's a minimum variance that would make possible reasonable use of the land will be in harmony with the general intent, purpose of this vision, will not be injurious to the area involved or detrimental to the public welfare. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application. I too make mistakes.
You're visualizing your new home. We're going to suck you into the village.
Okay, the applicant contends that the subject site is bounded by waterway along multiple boundaries. As a result, this unique circumstance is more realistic to develop a residential development consistent with the intent of the Village Code by allowing for tandem parking spaces. Staff is not in support of this variance because staff believes that the argument by the applicant that the property is bound by waterway is not sufficient justification for approving the variance request. Subsequently, the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three recommended approval by of application twenty-one fifty-six by a vote of three to two with Chairman Abbott Miller and Commissioner Kara Kouser dissenting. Again, staff is recommending denial of this application. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, applicant want to make some comments?
Yes, I have a brief presentation. Yeah, as Bradford mentioned, this request is for two different variances that I'll go over in detail. The first one is the tandem parking request. Uh, the first one is the tandem parking request. So, here is one of the, this is a footprint of the sixth, uh, six-unit building, just in response to the question, there mostly, mostly are six-unit buildings, but we do have, I believe, two five, two five-unit buildings and one four-unit building. So, majority are six-unit buildings. Uh, this in orange depicts the, the lot lines of each unit. So, in yellow, you can see what is prohibited by code for, um, everything but single-family products, so this is the tandem parking in yellow. Um, so essentially, as you'll see in my following slides, even if you have two cars, you can potentially have two cars parked in the internal driveway. So, even if, there are some other examples, I'll show you from other projects where they were able to even have 18 to 20-foot driveways, and the reason they didn't need to request this is because they showed their required parking off to the side. But, in reality, you're gonna park two cars in the driveway, and there will be a tandem spot behind the garage.
So, just for clarification on this one, the two end units, there's the width of the driveway, so it's one car in the garage, on the driveway, you can fit two cars next to each other?
Correct.
In addition to what's behind, so then, you do, you do think you can fit in the interior ones?
So, this slide, this slide does kind of speak to your.
Yep.
To your question, so, um, on our, on our end units, we're able to have a little more room, so we're able to provide that full 20 feet, which meets code by providing parking two spaces, 10 feet wide, the internal units, we're providing a 16-foot driveway. We're, we're trying to have a balance between, you know, obviously, we're, we're restricted by the width of the, of the townhome itself, but we also don't want to just have a solid pavement all the way across, or solid pavers all the way across the front of the entire townhome. So, we're trying to balance that, so we're able to provide a 16-foot wide driveway, which will fit, uh, mid, two, mid-size or smaller cars. The average car is 6 feet wide, so, um, there should not be any problem with fitting two cars. So, this shows in blue the cars technically that we're counting towards our code requirement, where in reality, the ones, um. Sorry, those are green, it's showing up differently, my bad, my, my fault. Uh, the ones in lighter blue here are the ones that could potentially park in the driveways, but they're not counted towards our, towards our requirements, they're not, that's not in our site data. So, each six-unit building could potentially have four more cars parked, if needed.
And that's accurate then from what we were looking at before, so.
Right. The, the rendering at the driveways.
Yes, cause that's what.
Fully representative of the rendering, um, that's actually from a different project, but the, the, the building itself is, is accurate. But the driveways that were shown on those, on that rendering was actually, it's one where we did a 10-foot wide driveway.
Because my concern is, and especially what we just dealt with, or I think it's one of our regular agenda items, is parking and parking in front of your neighbor, um, and that issue. So, that's accurate where the sidewalk is and the gaps, you really can only put two cars in there. It's not like you could fit four because it's a long driveway.
Correct, you can't park over the sidewalk.
Not on the side, but that's what I mean, so that is accurate, whereas you're not, you can't stack two cars back in, in one row because of that space, okay.
You're not gonna park in the street, which is basically all driveway.
Correct, so that's what I'm wondering, okay.
You can park the way he's showing it, yeah. We just don't, our code doesn't allow you to count, so that's.
Count them in spaces.
16-foot wide driveways, that's, that's, in a single-family home, the garage doors are 16 feet wide, so that's, that's very common, and that just can't meet our code. Uh, so, an example of where this was approved prior, um, in the enclave project of 441, uh, it's just a blow-up of their, their variance chart, they were approved with a tandem parking. That was basically, it was a multifamily project, but it had, some of the units had garages across the front, so they wanted to count the parking space behind the garage that they were offering for the, for those units. Next, moving on to the landscape area in front of the unit. Again, as you can see, the lot lines in orange, so you're basically left with a townhouse, with a typical townhouse product, it's not possible, you only have about 425 square feet of front yard in front of that unit, so that square footage goes out the door, and you're left with a 77%, and it's not, for the most typical townhouse projects, it's just not possible to have 75%. That leaves you with no driveway. So, highlighted in, in, in bright green here, our internal, one of our internal units here is where we're getting the 11% of landscape area. And then on the end unit, because we have a little more room there, it's a wider lot, we're able to have 23%, but a request, since it's the lesser of those, is the 11% landscape on those lots. Again, another example of where this also occurred is a Pioneer Estates project of Pioneer Road. Here's their site plan, um, also similar townhouse product, here's a blow-up. And they, here's their lot line. Slightly wider, so. Was that 23%? You can kind of, the, this, so this. Had an intent with. Didn't have to request. Variance criteria. And again, this, uh. Is recommended. That concludes.
And do we have any?
No, Mayor.
Great, for agenda item.
You can lay a, um.
Get there. Please come forward. Fire tag, okay, we'll go with that.
My name's Steve Fire Tag, 2107 Reston Circle, Royal Palm Beach. Before I start in with my prepared comments, I just wanted to comment on the, uh, car parking in the garages. I've lived in Madison Green for almost 22 years. Don't be naive, there's a very large percentage of homeowners, very large, that don't use their garages for parking cars, they use it for storage. So, please, don't, don't allow yourselves to be fooled. Mr. Mayor, councilmen and women, I appreciate your indulgence. Uh, I'm talking generically now about numbers 4 through 8. I'm hoping to be able to complete it, I won't abuse that, and this way I don't have to come back and repeat things one more times. I'm in favor of residential building on the land in question, but there are issues. Let's discuss variances. Variances are not asking for changes to guidelines. Variances are more than asking for changes to rules. According to your language and that of planning and zoning, variances are asking for changes to requirements. The clear-term requirements is your language. The agenda I circled eight times in these areas that that's mentioned, and there's an additional separate, uh, mention of a prohibition. So, these things are serious. When the company entered into a tentative contract to buy this land, they knew the requirements, they knew them. The company looking to buy this land, if you approve their requests, is not asking for one change to your requirements. They're not asking for two changes to your requirements, and not three either. They're asking for 11 or 12 changes to your requirements. Look back to when you put these requirements in place, along with help of planning and zoning, and with Bradford. Did you set these up willy-nilly? I don't think so. Each and every one of your requirements was given serious thought as to what was best for your residents and the curb appeal of our beautiful village. As you vote tonight, please remember your requirements were put into place for serious reasons. Some of the requests are minor, but at least two of the requests ask you to throw the requirements out the window. There's a 10-foot setback, there's a 25-foot buffer. These are requirements, yet they want you to ignore those and allow for a zero setback and a zero buffer. Was that your intent? I don't think so. I understand the potential buyer will be making a payment in excess of $600,000 for trees that will be knocked down. This is not a gift out of the good nature of their heart. When I attend, I'm sorry. I didn't say anything. When I attended planning and zoning three weeks ago, gusted to hear. Required to make. Say thank you. Recognize the need. End over backwards. Into a size six shoe. The viable alternative is simple, just tell the potential buyer to make these units smaller. With smaller units, they can still build the same quantity of 100 units, but the pricing will presumably be more affordable, and they can then fit and meet your requirements. Do you know who stood up and backed requirements? A gentleman from WGI mentioned it, and kind of glossed it over. But they first went to Indian Trail. Those board members voted no, and they recognized that their requirements were put in place with thought and not set up willy-nilly. Mr. Mayor, councilman, councilwoman, please do the same, as you have the opportunity to show respect for your requirements like Indian Trail, and to have at the same time more affordable housing in our village. Don't blow your opportunity, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to clarify a couple of things that you mentioned, I don't think, am I wrong? You're not asking for, the zero requirement request was withdrawn, and you modified that, didn't I?
It's on the entrance.
I don't know.
He's, well, he's speaking to another.
Another part of the project, okay, cause that's the one after one I was looking at. All right, uh, you're right, we don't, we, we set up our requirements and ordinances, they're not willy-nilly. But the reality, living in the real world, is there are projects that will come before you, and there's a process of, um, of adjudication, if you will, where property owners have the opportunity to come and ask for some modifications, so they can make a project work. Um, over the years, I have found that, uh, part of the, the setup of requirements is to create a, a profile on how we want our village to look. And for the most part, I think that's been adhered to, and I think most of the people living here agree that it is a beautiful village. And it's driven by those, those different requirements and ordinances and, and, and things that we say you have to put in place. But the reality is, you're gonna have projects come before you where you have to look at what you can, can allow to modify that, and still have something come out that still fits the motif of what we're looking to do in the village. Um, so, they're not, we don't look at them, they're not willy-nilly, you're right about that. Uh, but, and this, what, what was it you asked from Indian Trail specifically? Because it had nothing to do with their requirements, you wanted to.
It was to reduce, so they have a 25-foot canal maintenance easement, and we were asking them if they could reduce it to 20, which we've seen in other, other districts.
I've seen it done many times, and the fact that Indian Trail chose not to support that, I was really surprised at that, and don't really understand their thinking, but Indian Trail does what Indian Trail does. Uh, be that as it may, so I just want to put in context for you, some of the realities of, of involved in this process. If you look at the timeline, they've been working on this project for what, three, almost four years? And the reason, one of the reasons why is, is the working, trying to work with, with the, our planning staff, and, and trying to get some, some, uh, uh, complication around what really needs to be done, what's the. And it, it comes. Projects, and I think. That this was not a. Process, there was a lot of. Thing on both sides.
I would like to make. The request. A townhome. By 20 feet wide. Of grass area. I mean, it, it, it doesn't fit, it really. Has come in, has. Is not allowed. And is.
No time.
I'm not sure that. Need to relook at our.
Point off, that's the. Thank you, once again. I have no other comment card on agenda item. That option. On agenda item R4.
Actually, a. Good amount of time asked. Once, because we have. You weren't against. Property. Lack of. Much to the microphone.
Well, that's okay. Question and the opportunity for me to reply. My concern is really generic in making these changes so that they can fit what they say the size of these units are. In my opinion, you should have fewer units or smaller. And this. 12 area. And, and. This has been going on for many years. Two. One said. Let's do some. Make them smaller than. Go. Option that you want to.
One thing that I'd like to say, cause that's always been my concern, or what I always bring up when developers come in. I did go back, and we confirmed, I believe it originally was 123, 125 units that they had proposed, the very first proposal.
Yeah, I do not know.
It was like 123, 125, and now there's only 100.
It was, the number's somewhere up there.
Yep, and that's why, that's one of the, the things that our concern was that, and that they did redesign and come back, so I understand what you're saying.
Let's, okay. Let's move forward, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for that, thank you.
Um, any other questions, comments from council? Now's time. If not, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda R4?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved 5-0. Agenda item R5 is also a public hearing to consider a variance application. Number 21, 21-23, an approval variance order VC22-05, an applicant by D.R. Horton, Inc., requesting variances from sections 26-83, sub 4, sub C, to allow for 20-foot front setbacks to right-of-way, uh, to right-of-way line where village code requires 25 feet, a variance of 5 feet. A 20-foot setback, uh, to adjacent structure where village code requires 30 feet, a variance of 10 feet. A 20-foot setback, uh, to adjacent structure where village code requires 30 feet, a variance of 10 feet. And a 10-foot rear setback adjacent to the waterway where village code requires 20 feet, a variance of 10 feet. And a variance from the section 26-83, sub 4, sub D, to allow for a 0-foot perimeter landscape setback with adjacent to, with adjacent to interior lot lines where village code requires 10 feet, a variance of 10 feet. For a property located northwest of Okatomi Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection, this is quasi judicial, everyone was sworn in. And once again, can you explain this to us?
Sure, I'll try my best. Um, the applicant is requesting multiple variances from section 2683-4C for a property located northwest of Okatomi Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. The first request, um, is a 0-foot perimeter landscape setback. This reduced setback is generated for all townhouse buildings adjacent to perimeter landscape buffer along the northeast and south, um, property lines and is, uh, the second is a variance to the front setback to allow for a 20-foot setback instead of the 25-foot code required setback. So let me jump back real quick. Um, this 0-foot perimeter lens, landscape setback, the intent of that is to separate a townhouse building from the actual, um, landscape perimeter buffer itself so that the residents aren't opening their doors into the landscape as their recreation Tina is acting um, a 5-foot code requir allow 20 feet in lieu to the rear setback bit along the west which code of to this, to going over the circumstan is along with multiple predict to develop a assistant with the allowing for these variances. Staff is not in support of these variances because staff believes that the argument by the applicant that the property is bounded by waterways not sufficient justification for approving the variance request. Uh, the Plains zoning commission, at the regular meeting on May 23rd, 2023, recommended approval by a vote of four to one with chairman Adam Miller dissenting. And again, staff is recommending denial of this application. Now I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, I do have another presentation. Okay, so as Bradford mentioned, we have several zoning variances that we're requesting. So I'm just going to go through them one by one and hopefully I can explain, um, a little bit about each one and, and where they're located. So the first one is this perimeter landscape setback, um, which is a requirement of 10 feet basically between your rear lot line and the buffers themselves. Um, as you can see in, in blue, basically this is the entire, uh, rear setback of those western townhomes as well as the one townhome building in the southeast corner. So on top, um, in green, what we're proposing. So we have, for all of those units, we have a 10, between a 10 to 20-foot rear yard. And then we have a 25 to 30-foot buffer. So that's a total of 40 to 45 feet between the building and the perimeter property line. As Bradford mentioned, the intent of why this code section exists is if you have, uh, this is just a, uh, example of, but a 3-foot rear yard to prevent that 3-foot rear yard from being pushed up against the buffer, their code requires the 10-foot perimeter setback. Uh, but we do, again, feel that we have the adequate 10 to 20-foot rear yard where that is not going to be a problem. The, the side setback to the side of the structure, the code requires 30, we're proposing 20. Um, indicated in blue, it's basically the separation between the townhomes themselves. So code is 30 feet, we're proposing 20. Um, just some examples of nearby municipalities. Uh, Village of Wellington is a 15-foot requirement between townhome buildings. Palm Beach County is 15, West Palm Beach is 20. So in other, many other municipalities I've worked in, um, it, it averages 15 to 20. So as you can see, just for example, on a comparison to the Madison Green project right across the canal, um, those are zero outline homes with a 10-foot separation. Um, and they're all two-foot, two-story homes, same height as we're proposing, that are adjacent to the project. Um, but the 15 to 20 foot we feel is, the 20 foot we feel is an adequate separation. Next is a rear setback one adjacent to the waterway, where required is 20, we're proposing 10. So you can see that in blue, so this is all the homes, again, backing up to the canal. We have a 10-foot set, a 10-foot setback on those units to the proposed buffer. And then from the building to the perimeter property line, we have 40 feet. And then, and you have the canal, which is 191 feet, 193 feet, I'm sorry. Uh, so that's why we feel that we already have the adequate separation between the unit and the property line that we feel 20 feet is just not needed. This is a rendering that we created of basically looking from the backyard of the Madison Green project, looking to this project, so you can see, you know, it has definitely a lot of separation, talking 225 feet between, from building to building. And then we have, you'll see in the later slides, but we have that, we did add that buffer. So we have all of our required landscape material within the 5-foot buffer that we are proposing in addition to other landscape material in the rear yards. So this is approximately within two to three years because the, right at the eve of the roof is 20 feet. We're installing the 14-foot trees, so this just, you know, is probably in a two to three year range representation. The front setback to the right-of-way line, that's basically from the building, again, to the, to the edge of the sidewalk. Uh, we're proposing 20 feet, the requirement is 25 feet. Again, that's, that is enough, as I showed you in those earlier slides, to have the car, plenty of room to park the car. Um, we do, again, feel that that's adequate and it is, um, a fairly common setback for, for townhomes. It also was approved on the Pioneer Estates project. Um, they have 21 feet. In addition, the Cypress Key project on Southern Boulevard, they had a number of variances approved that I'll highlight here. The front of the buildings to the right-of-way, they actually have a 0-foot setback, which is, I believe it's for two of the buildings that had, they were rear-loaded essentially, um, which is why it was a zero request. But throughout the project, it ranges from about 15 feet to 20 feet for that front setback. Buildings side to side, again, the requirement's 20, they got, they provided the 20, requirement's 30, they provided the 20 feet, I'm sorry. And the perimeter landscape setback, in their case, it was 25 feet. All those zone variance criteria in the code for all of these variances. And just to note that we did receive the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Diane, do we have any public comment cards in advance? Ray, anyone have their hand raised with agenda item R5?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards from, uh, for agenda item R5, so I'm going to close public comment to agenda item R5. Take comments on members on council.
I do, actually, can you go back in your presentation? It's like three or four slides, so there's two slides specifically. The one where you have the, um, dimensions going from the backyard and you broke it down, the one I think it's, uh, yep, okay. So now from the back of the house to that, um, the darker line, is that the start of the canal?
Yes.
Okay, so then if I leave the back of my property, I really only have, is it the 10 feet? And then is that open space from the 10 feet to the 40-foot where it's back of the property? Or is there a wall back there?
So this is only adjacent to the canal for this request. So it's, you have, it's technically, it's 10-foot rear yard, then it's a 5-foot buffer. And then it's 25 feet of Indian Trail's easement.
So there is a wall back there, so really I only have 10. There isn't a wall, that's what I'm asking, so is that solid line back there?
That's the property, that's the property line of the entire development.
But it is open though, so from my backyard, I can walk to the canal?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question number one. And then number two, if you go to the next slide forward and that you had to choose the rendering of what it would look like from there, those are new trees that you intend on planting?
Uh, in, in front of the townhomes themselves, the, the trees, I don't know if you're talking about the trees in the foreground or existing trees.
So this view that I'm looking at now, so I'm in Madison Green, I'm looking across to the development.
This is your backyard.
Okay, that's the backyard of the property that you're building. Those trees back there, we said they were only 14 feet high and that would be a couple of years before they got to that point?
Yes.
So you're planting new trees. Is there any way of keeping the trees that are currently there because they are taller and thicker and it would provide more shade or more of a screening?
The, due to, so 99% of the existing trees that exist are slash pine. And if you grade, any grading of the land, and we are going to have to regrade, um, some of the canal bank. So any, and then with the homes being there, any grading of the soil around them, they will, they will die.
Okay.
Um, and also that mean they are, they are big, so they don't, a lot of them don't have a lot of, uh, foliage on the low, on lower trunk. So you'd mostly be looking at trunk if you did preserve those, but the, the real answer is that they cannot be preserved.
They can't be, okay.
We, we are preserving, and I'll go with that, um, towards the end.
So vegetation, uh, is in that 5-foot area of additional landscaping that you mentioned a while ago, is that it?
Yes, so we have, within the 5 feet, we have the 14-foot canopy trees, approximately 12 feet on center. And we also have additional trees in your 10-foot, in the 10-foot rear yard.
Okay, and that, that was, uh, one of the comments that was brought up during the previous, uh, meetings and several meetings, uh, was the view that you're showing right there was a concern that some of the Madison Green residents, and understandably. Uh, and, and so the idea of this 5-foot, uh, additional landscaping visual buffer is what, uh, you all worked on. And as part of that, did it have an effect then, or did it prompt any of the requests for variances?
It, it did, because we had to, we basically, we basically had to shift all of those townhomes along the west side, east 5 feet.
Okay, so to provide that visual barrier.
It did condense things and make, it did create
And you had to request variances?
Correct.
For that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Richard, Lena?
One more, and just Bradford can clarify this. Item number five does not include the entrance, or this is included, the entrance?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Okay, gotcha, entrance, thanks.
Separate item? Alright, no further comments or questions from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, regular agenda item number five.
Second.
There are a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R5 was approved 5-0. Agenda item R6, a public hearing to consider variance application number 20-1, 1-6, an approval variance order VC-22-03, an application by D.R. Horton, Inc., to allow for 45-foot and 54, and 50-foot right-of-ways, private roadways in lieu of the required 60-foot right-of-way required by village code section 22-51, sub B, sub 4, for a property located northwest of Okatomi Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. This is a quasi judicial process was sworn in, individuals were sworn in already.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, the applicant is requesting a variance from village's code of ordinances at section 2251B4A in order to allow the use of 45-foot and 50-foot wide right-of-ways, private right-of-ways in lieu of the village code required 60-foot public right-of-way width. Um, the applicant contends that the 60-foot right-of-way requirement is typical for public roads and 45-feet, foot and 50-foot rights-of-way are standard for private internal roadways. This item was originally considered by the Plains zoning commission meeting at its regular meeting on May 24th, 2022 and vote recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. This application was heard at the Plains zoning commission meeting and it was voted for to recommend approval of this app. Is recommending dash 116. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, applicant like to make comments?
Yes, I do have a, I do have a presentation on this one as well. Okay, as Bradford mentioned, we are requesting to reduce the 60-foot right-of-way requirement to 45 and 50 feet. So this graphic illustrates where exactly we're required, we're requesting that reduction. So in yellow, it will be the 50-foot right-of-ways and in blue, that is the 45-foot right-of-way. Um, actually, that was one of the reductions, the, the 45-foot right-of-way was one of the reductions that we made due to increase that 5-foot buffer. So in yellow, hopefully you can see this in the, uh, the dimensions here, so, um, just want to clarify in both of these, on the left, it's the 50-foot right-of-way and the right is the 45-foot right-of-way. But what's consistent i- is that, I want to clarify that we're not reducing the actual drive aisle. So the, the, there's a 24-foot drive aisle that consists of 20 feet of pavement with the 2-foot curb, curb and gutter on both sides. And that's consistent whether it's a 60, 50, 45. Um, so we're not reducing that drive aisle. Um, what's consistent on, on all three is the 5-foot sidewalk on both sides, we're keeping that. It's really that, that some call the swell area between the sidewalk and the curb that is being reduced. So you're going on the 50-foot, you're going from 13 feet down to 8 feet on both sides for that, that saw, swell area. And then on the 45-foot, we're going down to 3 feet between the sidewalk and the curb on the west side and 8 feet on the east side. Um, again, a couple of projects that also have this, and I, I know there's probably a few more, but again, the two projects, um, uh, Cypress Key and Pioneer State both had 50-foot right-of-way approved. We do feel, again, that we are meeting the subdivision variance criteria. And, um, staff's recommending approval and as Bradford said, P&amp;Z recommended approval as well. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Before we take comments from council members, Diane, any prior?
No, Mayor.
No questions on, on agenda item R6? Ray, anyone have their hand raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay. You feel lonely over there? They're, they're out there, oh, okay, they're just not raising their hands, okay. Okay, or they can't hear what we're saying, no. Um, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R6. And so I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R6, take comments from members on council.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I guess this is, uh, Bradford question, the, uh, the width of the roadway. I, I noticed there's not an, uh, a variance request for that. So the actual structure of the roadway, cause I originally had concerns and it was about, you know, the right-of-way and the ability of parking, cause I've seen some townhome places in the village where it's difficult. But this 24-foot, I think it was on there, that, that is not a variance, that's fine and provided by the code. And that's completely, okay, thank you. That's completely, okay, thank you.
Yep, actually, if you can pull up the presentation, I don't know, or either one of you, just so I can see, you know what, just the, yeah. Actually, just an overview of it, so we can see the whole development, because then you guys can use the, Bradford can use the cursor to answer my questions on that. Just give it back to Bradford, oh, or.
Yeah. They have a whole production department this.
I've noticed his.
I'm good, but I'm not that good, your point.
I've noticed his graphics are a little bit more involved than yours are.
No, no, it's not, pick on the graphics.
Perfect, just stop right there, so, and alluding to what Councilman Valentes was saying, so this is the whole thing that, and especially since once again, it's another agenda item that we have on here later on. Parking, where is guest parking? Because when I have my birthday party, and I'm living in unit three, and I have 15 people coming over, and I'm not using the clubhouse, where are all my people parking?
So we, we do have. See my cursor, but um, we we do have on-street parking, so it starts down, it it's basically from.
And that's all parallel parking, straight down?
This intersection here, south is all parallel parking.
Okay.
Um, as well as, I mean, which is the the rec area, but that is all um on-street parking as well.
So, yeah, no, we're invading our neighbor's space is what it is, and then we're all parking in the roundabout, in the cul-de-sac. So the only guest parking is where those other units were removed, so it's all on the south side of the property, on the east, the southeast portion of the property.
And then along the the south end where it has a cul-de-sac, so on.
The cul-de-sac part, right, but if I'm living, you know, south on there, everyone has all the, all the. The only guest parking is that whole strip right there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and how many do you know offhand, how many spaces are there?
Fifteen.
Five, zero.
Fifteen, one five.
Five.
Right.
There's 25 at the main entrance here.
Yeah. Come to Uber. And and pick up the so long away.
And there's a lot of parking at Winn-Dixie.
Yeah, so the other question that I had before, and I don't think they could answer it, is the very south tip, there is not um an opening there. Whether it's just for emergencies or anything like that, so if I live in that. To go all the way north.
And it it's. Egress only.
Right.
Okay.
To through the gas station, it'll be also gated, but it exit only through the gas station.
Okay.
And that was, yeah, originally, we did have a cul-de-sac there and um, and staff that. Depurposes and.
Okay, because you are. Thanks.
Members, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R six?
Six. Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, let the record show agenda item R six was approved 5-0. And we'll move down to agenda item R seven, which is a public hearing to consider landscape waiver application number 2-0-1-1-5. An approval of order LW-22-02. An application by D.R. Horton, Inc. for consideration of three landscape waivers as follows. Waiver one, from section 15-131 sub D. To allow for a zero foot buffer along the entrance drive where village code requires 25 feet. Waiver number two, uh, from section 15-131 sub E. To allow for a five foot buffer along the western property line where village code requires a 15 feet. And waiver number three is from section 15-131 sub B. To allow for no berms within the buffer where village code requires a three foot berm. For a property located northwest of Okentown Boulevard, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection, this was a quasi judicial process, everyone was already sworn in.
Great, thank you mayor, um, as you stated, the applicant is requesting three landscape waivers. The first waiver from, is from section 20, oh, sorry, 15-131D to allow for a zero foot buffer along the entrance drive where village code requires 25 feet. So what that code requires is, since this is a residentially zoned property, it requires a 25 foot buffer along this property line. And a 25 foot buffer along this property line, that entrance drive is, that this area is, I believe, 51 feet in width. So if you have a 50 foot buffer, you know, we're talking bicycles.
Fifty entrance?
Yes, sir.
Bicycle only.
Um, the second waiver from, is from section 15-131E to allow for a five foot buffer along the western property line adjacent to the canal system where village code requires 15 feet. Um, and the third waiver is to allow for no berms within the buffers where village code requires a three foot berm. So the buffer along the west property line will contain all materials that are required by our code, they're simply um asking for a reduction in the width, distance. Um, and with the canal, you can argue that that width and that separation is there. The applicant contends that this entrance drive exists today, and the second strength prohibited ability to provide required buffering. Additionally, pertaining to the waiver to three foot berm, the site is heavily vegetated and grading um would cause disruption to the native vegetation, which is planned to be preserved on the site. Um, staff is recommending approval of all three of the variance requests. The planning zoning commission at its regular meeting on May 23, 2023, recommended a vote of four to one with Chairman Adam Miller.
Aye.
Yes. Yeah, but it's a. All right, as mentioned, we have. I think Bradford. At explaining it, um, but the 25 foot landscape buffer reduction is again, both sides of the entrance drive, shown in green. Um, again, it's a, it's an existing condition, we have the 50 foot, 50 feet of property that's becoming 50 feet of right of way. There's no residential units on both sides, which is the intent, um, and there's no need to, there's no need to re- to buffer that commercial without the existing residential. Um, one other thing I want to point out is that the existing situation, as you can see on the, on the top. Um, we have the 50 feet of property, and originally, we we had proposed to um basically keep the same configuration that exists. Um, with maybe some landscape upgrades, um, but in working with with staff, um, we came up with the bottom, the proposed, which is. Kind of consistent with the interior right of way, I just went over, so reducing the pavement down in that area, which allows us to provide some landscape material on both sides. Um, in in place of that buffering.
Bradford, just so I got my orientation right, so this is off of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
And when you come in, on the right-hand side is where the the DBs is?
So when, excuse me, as you enter, on the right-hand side would be where the Dunkin' Donuts is, right? And then on the left-hand side would be.
But it's the new, the new one is further over, and there's a big empty space there now.
Empty space now.
You know that the property owner is looking to do something with that property?
Yes, they're they're looking to put in a uh restaurant, and it was, what is, there's a popular pizza and Italian food restaurant.
Japanski's or Japanski's or something.
Japanski's.
Japanski, there you go.
So this, what we're looking at here won't create an issue?
No, sir.
Okay.
So this is very similar a situation to the Oncle project, again, the 441. Uh, so focusing in on the entrance drive here, Christina Drive, we have commercial to the north and south. And it's basically the same situation where there was no buffer provided, because there's no, uh, there's not adequate space. So again, staff's recommending approval, and planning zoning commission recommended approval, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Diane, any advanced uh requests on R, agenda item R seven? Any hand raised, agenda R seven, no? I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R seven, so I'm closing public comment on that agenda item, take comments and questions from members at council.
Real quick, just for clarification, and you can answer this, so the only part of number seven is just the, well, either one of you, just the entrance? No, because aren't there more, so the, your presentation then that you just gave was just the entrance, but yet there's three other parts, two other parts of this.
Correct, so um, they want to eliminate the three foot berm.
Right.
So within that five foot area on the west side, a three foot berm, there's not enough space because of the required slew. And then, then the berm is also required along the east portion.
Right.
And as you then, the south portion that is adjacent to the commercial property, they're wanting to eliminate the berm in that area also. But they have a six foot fence, so the idea is three foot berm, three foot hedge, six foot screening, they're accomplishing that screening with the wall.
But everything is just the entrance.
But and then this one, that one that, no, this item is the three components, the entrance, the zero, zero landscape buffer on the entrance drive.
That, yeah. And that was the presentation that you just gave.
Correct, the reduction of the 15 foot landscape, uh, perimeter landscape buffer on the west side from 15 down to five. And then the elimination of the berm along the the west property line and adjacent to the commercial property.
All the way in the back, okay, that's.
So I, my apologies, I can go through that, I do not know what happened to the rest of the slides.
Right, because that's what I was saying, because you went, it was beautiful the beginning, and then. Right. Now Bradford's better than you.
Oh, boy, what a competition, okay. Any?
Uh, yeah.
Whenever you finish.
If I could just speak to that, um, if you just look at this, my apologies, I don't know where those slides went, but speaking to the second request, the 15 foot wide landscape buffer. Um, again, that's adjacent to the canal.
Yep.
And. With the amount of, speaking to my, the slides we went through previously, um, because we have 15, we have the 10 foot rear yard with the five foot buffer. And then we have that 25 foot, uh, Indian trails, maintenance easement. Um, we did just did not feel that, because we have the separation of the canal, that we needed to have that full 15 foot wide landscape buffer. But now, remember, within the five foot landscape buffer, we're providing all the code required landscape, we're not, we're not requesting to reduce the amount of landscape. It's just within the five feet. So we have a three foot hedge, and we have trees, um, the 14 foot trees every 12 feet, um, which actually exceeds code.
And we were talking about the perimeter that goes all the way in the north and the west side.
This, this is.
This is all part of the same.
This is along, this is along the canal up to where the property starts to curve, and then there's no buffer required, because there's apartments. To the north, and there's a zero buff, there's no buffer required at all, but it it covers the entire uh north-south portion of the canal up to. Basically where you see that line where it says recreation area, a little bit north of that, that's all, the buffer extends to there, and then there's no buffer on the north side.
You do not have buffer on the north side, and that's because it's just a waterway.
On the, yeah, on the very north side of the project, we, we're not, we're, there is landscape, there's landscape in the rear yards. Um, but there's not an actual planted buffer with trees every 12 or 15 feet on center.
Right, that's wrong to clarify.
Because it's just not required by code because of the apartments to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Then the, then the three foot high berm. Uh, that's basically everywhere where we have a landscape buffer, so adjacent, basically adjacent to the commercial area, um, all the way around. Um, Village Royale Shopping Center, and then along, so that area in particular, we speak to that along, adjacent to the commercial. We have proposed a six foot wall, um, that's completely adjacent to the commercial, and that wall is five feet from. The commercial itself, so five feet back from the property line, so if we did propose a berm, you wouldn't, it wouldn't really have any effect, because it'd be behind the wall.
It's a three feet versus the six feet is the height of the wall, so I understand that.
Right, so we, we, we wanted to really propose the, the wall for not only visually block the commercial, but for sound purposes as well. Um, in addition, the reason we couldn't do the berm is because that area, that that, because we're proposing a 20, a full 25 foot buffer adjacent to the commercial. That's the area where we can preserve trees, the existing trees, so that's what we're proposing, if you propose the berm, then that kills the pine trees.
And that's what I wanted to, okay, so I understand that, so there are the three elements in this, not just that other one. The other thing is with that wall there, I understand it's a six foot wall, I appreciate that you're keeping the current trees there, because especially since all of your units are two-story. I'm looking way over your six feet to begin with, and I don't want to look into the back of Winn-Dixie, nothing against it, just prefer not to see it.
Right, yeah.
So if you're keeping those, so there is that, not only for sound, but security and visual, okay, thank you.
Right, and and again, there is, in addition to those, there is the required buffer plantings as well, which although, you know, they will mature, although they're 14 feet installed, they will obviously mature.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And then the three foot berm, we're requiring to eliminate also along the canal, again. Because we only have the five foot buffer, and we just can't put a berm, and that you need, actually need 18 feet for a three foot berm to work.
Right.
And with that buffer and not disturbing the Indian trails easement, um, that's that request.
And the landscaping then will still be there, so it is, right, thank you.
Richard?
Just at your entrance, um, you didn't mention it, but you have sidewalks there, right?
So, correct, we actually are proposing townhouses.
To walk into the shopping area?
Well, not directly, but indirectly you can get there, unless you guys found a way to directly connect.
We are, we are, so, yeah, there's an existing sidewalk on the north side that is going to connect to our project, but we're also proposing one on the south side that does just. Because it narrows down right where we have the the turnaround before the gates, there is a crosswalk going to the north, but there is a sidewalk on both sides.
How about on the exit, exit only, is there a sidewalk there?
Yes, um.
So if I want to go to Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, so that's, I can go really quick through my slides, so this highlights that pedestrian connection um through the south side. Uh, we we are, you know, there there is a sidewalk in most of that area, but um, we're gonna provide that connection over to the to the plaza.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, on the north side, just because of how the plaza, yeah, I looked at that to try to show where you could go around the north side, but you'd have to, around the north, you'd have to walk out to Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. And there's actually not, from Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, there's not a complete sidewalk to Winn-Dixie for any of the shops, there's no, there's a partial, but there's no.
Close, but not, not quite, yeah, okay.
Didn't we line up with the Publix area, didn't we line that sidewalk up so it it would cross over?
Didn't, public project.
Yeah, so that it would come over, and then you can, you have the accessibility.
Or we made Publix outside. Roads. Major in there, we'll get.
I'll look for a motion. Agenda item.
Prove regular agenda.
All in favor? Votes? Diane, let the record show. To agenda item. And that. Action of resolution number. Through approval for 100 unit townhouse development for a property located northwest Okentown Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection. This too is a quasi judicial uh item, and everyone has been sworn in already. So, Bradford?
Thank you, sir, um, the applicant is seeking a site plan modification approval in order to construct 100, a 100 townhouse development. The 100 units will be divided between 18 buildings, the site will also contain 0.89 acre. The site will also contain point eight-nine acre lake for onsite retention. In addition, the site plan provides three-point-six-eight acres of common open space. Ingress and egress to the site will be from Royal Palm Beach Boulevard as well as an egress point at the southwest corner of the site leading to Okeechobee Boulevard. This is an illustration of the site plan. In pursuit of section twenty-six seventy-five point four G two of village code requires for recreation space, add ten acres of recreation space for every one thousand residents. Each dwelling unit generates two-point-five residents per village code. Thus, based on the proposed one-hundred multifamily dwelling units, the recreation area required is two-point-five acres. Um, this section of the code also allows for a credit for private open space where, where up to fifty percent of the required recreation area can be provided as private open space to the residents of the subdivision. The applicant is proposing to provide a total of one-point-three-one acres of private recreation onsite for a total of fifty-two percent of the project's recreation obligation. The private recreation areas proposed will include a pool, cabana, totlot, natural trail, exercise trail with exercise equipment, picnic der- picnic area and playfields. The applicant is also offering to pay a fee in lieu of dedication of land to the village for one-point-one-nine acres or eighty, forty-eight percent of the project's recreation obligation. Uh, village code also allows for a fee in lieu of dedication of land, and the applicant is proposing four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents per acre fee in lieu of payment for the one-point-nine acre recreation obligation for a total of five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. I think I put a smile on Lou's face right there. Um, as mentioned. As mentioned on a prior item on tonight's agenda, the applicant intends to make the contribution to the village's tree bank of six-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and ninety cents in lieu of the preservation of specimen trees. Um, the review in this application, village staff consider conformity with the chapter twenty-six of village code ordinances, specifically proposed project meets the requirements for the mixed use, I'm sorry, the, uh, RM nine zoning district as it pertains to parcel size, parking, setback, purpose area, parking requirements, landscape barriers, and maximum building height aside from the variances that were approved. The applicant is also requesting architectural for the townhouse buildings, paying a signage and landscape plan. Here's an illustration of that landscape plan. Here is a architectural rendering, it's kind of a typical of the materials that will be used.
That's, that's the same house.
Here is, here is the signage that will be proposed. Um, here is the cabana, um, illustration. This item was considered by the planning and zoning commission at a regular meeting on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and recommended a vote, by a vote, approval by a vote of four to one, which Adam, um, chairman Adam Miller dissenting. Turn the floor back.
Okay, so this application is for the site plan and architectural approval. Um, this slide just indicates, um, you know, going back a little while, what, what our original design and just kind of going through, um, some of the changes that, that we've made in, in working with staff as well as the applicant. So, um, the original plan didn't have a whole lot of amenities, um, as a whole. Um, we, there you can see the cul-de-sac, we didn't have that connection to the south for emergency purposes. Um, fast forwarding to today's plan or what became today's plan, we've increased the amount of recreational amenities on the project. We went from, um, or as part of those amenities, Bradford covered those, but we have a fitness trail, uh, on the north side with fitness stations, we have, um, walking trails throughout the rec area. We have a trail around the pathway around the lake itself, with cabana, um, totlot, pool. We have modified the dried attention area to become a lake and increase the size. Uh, we made the adjustment to that entrance drive off of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard that I discussed earlier and added the five-foot sidewalk. And we reconfigured the plan to, to allow that egress only to the south. Um, and then following that, in September of last year, we made the adjustment to add that five-foot landscape buffer on the west side. Again, this was that pedestrian connection over to the plaza I just discussed. Uh, these are some additional renderings of the project, so this is the entrance coming off of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard before the gates there, and you have the, the, uh, canal, uh, bay area there where it comes in on your right-hand side. Looking over straight to the, um, rec space there, this is through the gates, your cabana is on the left and the, that open, the open spaces straight ahead. Um, we have a lot of, um, mitigation trees planted in that area, so it will become, um, pretty, you know, very shaded area there. This is looking at the internal cul-de-sac, actually looking back to the rec area. And this is just an internal shot of one of the townhomes and the, the pocket park, which is going to be the picnic area. And then this is, um, again, this is just, it's representative of the actual building elevation itself, so you can ignore the, the driveway configurations, but this is the, the finishes, there's actually two different options that are proposed for the finishes of the building. So in conclusion, uh, it's going to be a substantial. Traffic, then what? It's between. The, uh. Specimen trees that do. Contribution to the. Thousand dollars. Any of the, the. Of the specimen tree. D B A. Seventy-three. Planted onsite as well. Hundred and forty-eight. Again, staff is. Was planning. Approval.
Diane? Agenda item R eight? Hey, anyone have their hand? Received any public? Comment?
Be replanted or? And?
They are removed. They have relocated. And they probably won't. Right. You can't even disturb.
Questions from members on council? Item R eight?
Hi.
Hi.
Any?
Mr. Miller, I asked your. You guys are taking the. Portable housing. The estimate. Price.
Fifty, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, very much, and just also wanted to thank staff for working with us, uh, throughout this process, much appreciated.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a process. Um, what's your timeline now?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, well, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to agenda item R nine. You got it? Okay. Agenda item R nine is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption ordinance number one-zero-three-three, amending chapter twenty-three. Traffic and vehicles at section two-three dash one-six, manner of parking vehicles upon streets, public rights aways, public-owned. Parking spaces, vacant lots, swells, um, to clarify the swell parking restrictions within the village in additions to regulations to address parking of vehicles on public-owned property. Um, who's, you guys take this?
I, I can. Rob Hill is out there, he's, uh, he's actually at a conference, but he hasn't been online all night.
Okay.
Okay, I don't, I don't hear him, so I'll take this. Yes, this is, this is the, the parking ordinance that we're changing so that you cannot park in front of, um, your neighbor's property unless for more than two hours without their permission. And you can't park in front of their, their property, um, in their swale at all. So that's the, we, we've had some of those issues throughout the village. Uh, we think this, by putting the two-hour limit in there, that this is work for parties and events like that and, um, and make it more pleasant in our neighborhoods where people, some of our neighbors tend to want to park permanently in front of other people's houses.
Okay.
Second reading.
This was the second reading, um, before we take comments and questions. Any advanced comments on agenda item R nine? No? Ray, anyone have their hand raised, agenda item R nine?
No, they do not, mayor.
I do not have any comment cards on agenda item nine, so I'm closing, um, co- uh, public comment on agenda item R nine. Comments from members on council, if there are no questions, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular, agenda item number nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any a poll? We have no polls, Diane, let the record show that the second reading for agenda item R nine was approved five-zero. Agenda item R ten is a public hearing for the first reading and approval of ordinance number one-zero-three-five, amending chapter eight. Elections of the village code of ordinances to provide the village Royal Palm Beach shall hold its next municipal election on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in conjunction with the presidential preference primary election.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and, um, basically what this does is it aligns the municipal election with the presidential preference primary. Generally, municipal election is the second. Our code. It's primary. The, uh. Election with the. Not capable of. One week.
Okay.
So. Wrote our code.
Yes, sir. Uh. R ten? In this agenda item, some.
Regular agenda item.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any a polls? We have no polls. Diane, please let the record show, agenda item R ten was approved five-zero. Agenda item R eleven is adoption of resolution number two-three-dash-one-eight, a resolution of the village council of the village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, appointing a village treasurer.
Ray? At our March organizational meeting, we did not have a finance director, and we did appoint our assistant finance director, the treasurer. We do now have a finance director, Sharon Almeda.
Sure about that?
And, uh, I recommend the council appoint our new finance director, the village treasurer.
Okay, I don't think there were any comment cards in this, was there?
No, ma'am.
Agenda item R eleven, any comment cards, any hand raised?
No, mayor.
We have no public comment cards submitted, so we're closing public comment on agenda item R eleven, and I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number eleven. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any a polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show that our new treasurer was approved as, as, uh, on a vote of five-zero and officially welcome on board. So glad to have you here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Agenda. Agenda item R twelve is appointment of one member to the planning and zoning commission for term ending March two thousand and twenty-five. Jen?
Okay, um, when we find ourselves with an opening, usually we have very few applicants. We had three this time, which I want to thank anybody who applies for any of our boards, we really appreciate your involvement in the community. And, um, we encourage you to keep getting involved. Um, but tonight I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kamara Williams to the alternate seat for remaining three-year term expiring in March two thousand and twenty-five. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any a polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show, agenda item R twelve was approved five-zero. And agenda item R thirteen is appointment of one resident to the Palm Beach County Water Utilities Advisory Board as provided by resolution R dash two-zero-zero-six dash zero-eight-six-seven concerning the composition of the advisory board, right?
This person has been serving on our board and wishes to continue to serve on our board.
Okay. So if there are no comments or questions, look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item R thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any a polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R thirteen was approved five-zero. Uh, no further comments, uh, no further business tonight for this council, so we stand adjourned. Thank you all so much, appreciate it. It's a long meeting, but we got a lot accomplished.